Okay, I'd like to call the Senator St. Paul Regular Council Meeting to order at 6:41 PM. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to apologize to everyone, our workshop went a little bit later, our first one that actually went a little bit later. I'm trying to keep everything on time. This time, Mary, if you could take role?
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Walzak?
Here.
Councilmember Sonic?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here. Quorum is present. This time, I need a motion to adopt the agenda, but we are going to remove an item, item B, I believe. And item B is the variance request for 2557 12th Avenue East. So at this time, I'd like to motion for the adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Sonic, seconded by Councilmember Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. The agenda's adopted. This time, we have our presentations. We have our first presentation is our comprehensive annual financial report. And we have Aaron Nielsen here. If you want to introduce yourself and address the councils.
All right. Very good. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. As mentioned, my name is Aaron Nielsen. Jackie Heagle is along with me this evening, and we had the opportunity to meet with council before tonight's meeting at the work session. We're both partners with an independent firm, Malloy Montague Kornowski Rudosovich, and we appreciate the chance to speak to you at the work session. And tonight, I intend just to share with the public the three reports that you have before you, and to share that they've been completed. The first report you have, the largest of the documents, the city's comprehensive annual financial report, so it is a lengthy document, approximately 130 pages long, for the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2018. We also have the special purpose reports, which includes the reports required under government auditing standards, as well as the Office of the State Auditor's legal compliance manual. And then the third report we had was the management report, which is what we use primarily to facilitate our discussion at the work session just before this meeting. So, a couple of comments I wanted to share. We did issue what is known as the unmodified or clean opinion that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We had one paragraph within the opinion, the emphasis of the matter, to share that there was a change in reporting for other post-employment benefits, but it was a required change with the implementation of new gas-based standards, or Government Accounting Standards Board reporting requirements. We had two findings that we discussed with regard to the internal control in our compliance reports. Both of the findings were in the legal compliance manual of the state auditor's reports that we discussed at the work session. And then I also mentioned I wanted to share with the public that you, as a city, again, for your general fund, the primary operating fund of the city, were able to meet that fund balance policy that you do have in place, the 25 percent minimum, and continued to meet that fund balance goal as of the end of the year, December 31st, 2018. So with that, if there's any questions or comments, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Any questions or comments for Aaron? It's a good report, and you've been working with our new finance director, and he's doing a good job. That's all we want to hear.
Very good, yes, thank you.
Well, good, good. Well, thank you, and I appreciate it, and we're good for another year?
Yes. You met the other requirements for the last past year ended.
We survived again.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jackie, also, for your help in this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have Scott, if you want to do this one?
Sure. Mayor and council, thank you. Tonight, we also have Scott Qualley here from Minspec. And again, if you recall, late or early last fall, we made a change with our building official, and when our building official had retired, we went out with contract service with that, with Minspec. And then recently, we renewed that contract that we had started on a short, temporary time. So I have Scott here tonight to just give an overview, again, on their company, and kind of the things that are going on with them, and which ties directly with all the development that we're experiencing right now, so I know they're very busy.
We are, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, mayor and council. We haven't had a chance to meet yet, and I feel kind of bad about that, because normally that's, we didn't follow the traditional model for marketing and getting new business. It was on the heels of, I guess I'll call it a crisis, I don't know, it was certainly an urgent matter that needed to be resolved right away. You've got six days' notice, or 10 days' notice, with a couple days to not respond, and all of a sudden, we're in the throes of things. And we haven't really had a chance to interact. I've had a great interaction with city manager Dudek, I would like to call him Scott, but I know that's not the proper way to handle that.
We're pretty relaxed.
Okay, good, I appreciate that. Starting off with an interim, and an urgent interim, and then a short-term interim, and then, you know, a long-term opportunity here. And I don't know that you know much about us, I assume that you trust what Scott's done and put in front of you, and I'd like to back some of that up with the actual details that got us to where we are. So I bought the company that we now call Minspec in 2005 from its founder, Paul Waldron. Paul Waldron and Associates was his company. We've gone through a couple of name changes since then, we've been Minspec since 2008, I think it was, is when we switched the name. We office in Waconia, we've got 23 employees, and we just are added three people just in the last, well, last week, and we had another one on Wednesday, and another one at the end of the month. So we'll be up to 23, actually 24 people by the end of the month. We serve 18 communities with a population totaling about 65,000, of which North St. Paul is one of those communities. We provide additional services for seven additional cities, primarily a plan review and some inspections as needed. The, we're kind of in a transition time in technology and in staffing issues, not necessarily for us, but for the industry. The billing inspections industry has long relied on people who worked in the trades for 20 or 30 years, and wrecked a shoulder, or messed up a knee, or hurt a hip, and decided they were tired of swinging a hammer, and decided that they wanted to come work in the billing inspections industry. And we had a program at the North Hennepin and Inver Hills Community Colleges that was the Building Inspection Technology Program. And that program was designed to take people who were familiar with the industry and bring them into the billing inspection side. And it was a degree program, or certificate program, 16, 17, 18 classes, touching on plumbing, and commercial, and residential, and planner view, and inspections, and all those elements put together to bring someone into the right spot to be a building official. And I happened to have the opportunity to go through that program in 2006, and after the downturn in 2009, they pretty much closed their doors to that. They teach four classes now, an introduction to billing inspections, introduction to residential, I'm sorry, inspections, planner view, and then a kind of capstone course. And that's all that is offered anymore. So that, in league with the idea that 50 percent of all the building officials that are currently working in the industry right now are going to retire in the next three to five years, there's this kind of crisis situation, or urgency situation that's going on. Someone will retire, and there won't be anyone to fill the position, or if they find someone to fill it, they just create that trickle-up problem where there's going to be a hole at the bottom. So, that's how I got here, was that we provide that backfill for those kinds of situations. And I want to talk just a little bit about education. For me, education is really important. We teach continuing education for contractors, in fact, we hosted a class here last year, this last spring, for contractors, 18, 19, 20 people come, I teach a class for seven hours, and teach them about wall bracing, or whatever topic is relevant or available for that day for them to understand. And we believe that's a cornerstone of what we're trying to do. Our motto is helping you comply with the code. So it is our job, and our belief, is me as a billing official and my staff, to help people understand what the code says, what it means, why they have to do it, so that they, although might not want to, at least knowingly understand why they have to do the things that they have to do. Every community is different. There are a variety of things going on here in particular, in North St. Paul, that create that range, or that spectrum of need. We've got people in older homes that want to fix them, repair them, you know, fix them up. We've got repurposing of existing buildings, we've got some commercial buildings that need to be repurposed, or that are of need, or the owners want to repurpose them. And there are some issues that come with that, the idea of, is it too big, is it made out of the right construction, can they do anything without sprinkling, all those kinds of things come into play with that. There's new multifamily, and new homes that are going to be built, and the Anchor Block site, and things like that. So a variety of activities, and we need to be really well-diverse with that. I would be bragging, and I'd be happy to do that, that we have six formerly designated building officials. So the building official in Minnetoka, the building official in Spring Lake Park, the building official in Lake Elmo, the building official in Scott County, another building official from Scott County, and myself, all on our staff. I've got really good, deep, experienced people that have worked for 20, 30 years in this industry, working as my senior-level management team, and senior-level inspectors and planner viewers at my office. So you've got really a, kind of a Cadillac approach. There are no cities that have that level of depth in their departments. They might have someone who's worked for them for 20 or 30 years, but never been a building official in another city, come to work for them. We would like to impress upon you the idea that doing our job requires two things, technology and go old-fashioned, face-to-face, handshake kind of work. The face-to-face stuff is what is part of that hand-holding, to help someone get through their repairing or repurposing their existing building. And the technology helps us do that better, faster, cheaper, easier, it communicates more effectively, it makes things easier to get things back and forth. So I'll just quick touch on our technology stuff. One of the first things that we implemented when Jeff came from Scott County was to start doing electronic planner view. And we had toyed with the software, and we had a big 58-inch monitor and a souped-up computer that could drive that monitor to make sure that we had good resolution documentation, but we really hadn't stepped off the ledge. We were still doing a lot of paper planner view. And that's now changed such that we are only doing electronic planner view. If someone submits paper, that's fine, we'll scan it, put it in our system, we'll do the electronic planner view, and then submit electronic copies back. Now, it does a couple of things. It lets the city have a copy for archiving, that doesn't have to be a roll-up stack of papers that sit in the basement somewhere, that you have to deal with and find, and all that stuff. And theoretically, now, we can archive things forever, instead of having to have limitations on how long we keep documents before we throw them away. It also gives the field copy, which we will always print in paper, or will be a printed paper copy, but also the opportunity to reproduce that. If it gets wrecked in the rain, someone leaves it out, or it gets stolen from the job site, we can reproduce that fairly easily. And then finally, our inspectors have tablets, and they can actually download that copy of that electronic planner reviewed plan on their tablet. So if the job site doesn't have that copy, they lost it, someone's in someone's truck, it's not here today, we can still do the inspection and get through that for them, so that we can help them move on with their process. So the electronic planner view offers some significant benefits to the process. It also allows a job to come in here, it can be transmitted to us electronically the same day, and we can start doing the planner view nearly immediately. In fact, we've turned around a number of deck projects, not necessarily this year, but in previous years, the same day. We get them in, we process them, and send them back the same day. Cloud file transfer is a key, important piece of that. We can set up a SharePoint site, so that the city can have an inbox, and we can have an outbox, so we get stuff from you, we send back to you, you have access to it, it's secured just between us and you, so that it isn't available for anyone to go look at, but it's all there for us to make it very easy, it's just like a drive on your server, and you can drop stuff off there, we get a notification that's there, and then we can do that work quickly. The last thing is our inspection software. And we have transformed our processes from a series of spreadsheets, how we keep track, when we used to have what we called an inbox. And when we got a plan in with an application, we'd log it into our inbox, and it would sit in the inbox until it got done, we'd have to log it out of the inbox to make sure that it showed, then we'd put in our tracking spreadsheet that would keep track of what inspections had to be done, and we'd mark off everyone that happened, and then we'd finalize it, and that would become a billing process, and all those kinds of things. And now we have CityForce software. And that CityForce software kind of does all that at once. It allows you to have access from the office to be able to look and see the status of something. It notifies us that someone picked up and paid for a permit, so that we don't have to wonder, oh, we sent it back to the city, but we don't know if it's been paid for yet, they say they didn't have it on the job site, does that mean they haven't picked it up yet, or does it mean they just have it in a truck? So it helps us to authorize that, and it also takes care of the billing process for us as well. So it's all kind of nicely packaged and put together, so that we can take care of all that. And then finally, again, we're inspecting off of tablets, we can work off of checklists. I think consistency is really important. When you have a company with 25 people, or 23 people, you need to be doing things the same way, because ultimately, everyone that works for me is signing Scott Qualley by someone else's name. Because I'm the building official, I'm the one that's on the hook with the state, I'm the one that's on the hook to you, I own the company, it's all about me, in that sense. I'm the one that's responsible. And so when people go out to do a water heater, any one of you might, I could deputize you out and do a water heater inspection, you go, what am I supposed to look at? And Tom, you might have some experience in water heaters, and Candy, you might haven't have any idea what a water heater is supposed to be all about, right? And so if I give you a checklist, as an inspector, and my expectation is you've got those minimum abilities, but I want to make sure you don't miss that there needs to be a shut-off on the supply side, or if it's a gas water heater, that there's a drip leg that's on the supply side of the gas, so that any particulate ends up down in the drip leg, and doesn't end up screwing up your gas valve, and that there's a shut-off on that gas valve, and it's on the backside of a union. So when you disconnect it, you don't have gas flowing, because you could shut it off on the other side, but you, once you disconnect it, you've got gas in the house. Those simple kinds of things give me consistency and peace of mind and comfort that we're doing a comprehensive and thorough job, and that we're making sure that all of our guys are doing exactly the same thing when they do those inspections.
You got that, Candy?
Yep.
Glad I could help with that.
A little levity is good.
So we've got lots of handouts. We redesigned our website to make sure we've got 75 or 80 handouts to help your residents and citizens to be able to understand, oh, I want to do a deck, or convert a deck into a screen porch, what do I have to do with that? Well, we got a handout for that, and they can kind of work through that, figure out what documents they might have to submit, or if they need plans for this or not, and all those kinds of things. So those informational handouts become really helpful as well. In my mind, it's all about helping you comply with the code. And as the contractor for the city, my job is to help you comply with the code, and my job as the building official for the city is to help the homeowners and the residents comply with the code, as well as their contractors. So that's kind of, that's me in a nutshell, that's what I'm about, it's what we're about, what we're trying to accomplish here, and I appreciate your faith and confidence in us doing that work, because we have a great working relationship with staff, and we're very happy to be here.
I guess, you know, for me, it's the employee customer satisfaction, you know, is the customer getting his response right away, is it easy for him? You know, that's my biggest concern, is are residents getting their best response from you guys? I guess that's my question.
And I think what I would add to this, and gives us this opportunity, with us previously having one building official in the entire community, and now with the growth that we're having all at one time right now, we've got the depth with Minspec to be able to have that number of extra inspectors there when that spike happens.
Yeah, the two people that we're adding, besides the administrative person that we hired last week, are both planner viewers, plans examiners. My goal is to have planner view, now, I don't want to promise this, but my goal is to have planner view at three days for new homes, one day for smaller projects. Our contract says 10 days, we're always going to beat that, but I'd love to be at five days for a new home, and then work our way down to three, that's our goal. You know, life is cyclical, it's, whether it's seasonal, or, you know, Tuesdays, or whatever it is, there are peaks and valleys. And the easy way to staff that is to kind of staff in the middle, and shove all the extra stuff off into the valley that comes up next. And that works okay, sometimes, it's not the most customer-oriented. If you can get enough of these little squiggles going on, you can staff at the top and take care of everybody all the time. If we've got a nice diverse staff, someone can do plumbing inspections one day, and mechanical inspections the next day, and commercial billing inspections the next day, great, I've got, I'm in a much better spot to be able to staff at the top of those curves, and make sure that you're always taken care of.
Good, good. Scott, if you're in our town, I see you've got some cards there.
I do.
And I would like to give you one of our cards, as our pin for the city, and I'd love to have you wear it as.
We've got a bunch of these for you.
When you're in town, you can.
For Christmas.
Sure, absolutely, you bet. I love those. So my cell phone's on here. I don't mind anyone calling anytime, my phone's always available, but I'm not always the best person to solve your problem, I don't mean your problem, but a consumer's problem. There are 23 people that stand behind me to do that, and so I would always say if someone needs to get ahold of us about something, call our office, ask whoever answers the phone, and there's always four people that are there to answer the phone, what your problem is, and they will route you to the right person. But if you've got an issue, you need to call me, my cell phone's on my card, so please feel free to use that. And I will wear this with Brian, thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Oh, wait, Tom?
Sorry, good questions.
Yeah, a couple of questions. So you mentioned your CityForce software, so is that a customer relationship management, CRM software?
No, it's just building inspections.
Just building inspection?
Yeah.
So even with that, though, would you be, do you have reporting capabilities in this software? So can you report on the number and type of permits that were submitted in North St. Paul on an annual basis?
Absolutely. You'll be able to pull those reports once we're fully implemented.
Okay. When will we be fully implemented?
We're, we are, just started to have that conversation the other day, because you're using other software to track your permits, and the contract was just extended in the last two council meetings, as I recall, and so now we're getting to the, how are we going to change things, how do you want the handouts to look, we want to have your logo on them, and all those kinds of things. That's all part of the process as we step forward into the long-term arrangement, because before, it was kind of interim, and we might cut you loose at any time, and so we were holding back on some of those things. So I would guess in the next 60 days, we'll be there.
Sixty days. The next question was, we had talked about the potential for you to be able to accept permit payments through this software, is it through the CityForce software that you would do that?
It is, it's the public portal part. So there's an inspections piece, there's the, kind of the city and our piece of it, and then the public portal is what they call that. And that's going to be the last thing to be implemented. We haven't actually implemented that in any of our communities yet, we want to make sure that the rest of the software gets rolled out correctly, and everybody's comfortable and using it effectively. Then we'll roll out the public portal, but it will allow people to apply and obtain maintenance permits initially. So that's roofing siding, windows, doors, plumbing, and mechanical permits online. So you want a permit on Saturday night, right, you fill out the form, and you give it, put in your credit card number, and you've got a roofing permit at Saturday at 6:00 in the morning, and you could start working at 7:30 without any trouble.
What's your ballpark for that?
I would say it's, my hope is by the beginning of the fourth quarter, so by the end of September.
Okay.
Perhaps before that, but that's kind of where we're shooting now.
And last question was, and I'm not sure if we had this in the past, but you mentioned about plan requirements for different types of projects. If somebody wants to convert a deck, for example, that you said, you have all these documents of requirements that are available, and those are electronic, so I could contact you and say, this is what I want to do, and you could just email me those documents.
Email it to you, yeah. They're on the website, they're also in a big, thick, two-inch binder at the counter downstairs.
Oh, so are they accessible through our city website?
We have them here, and those are all the things that we're getting put in place on our website, we'll be building that up, and then also working with Scott on their software program to bring that together as one.
Excellent.
Also, with the phone number, just so everybody's clear on the phone number, we've got a phone number established here for our building inspections, so residents always have to have their one phone number here. We have two options for them on there, there's an option one, option two. So if they are looking for building inspections, they'll push one, that'll route them right over to Minspec's office directly. Or if there was a question here for our counterstaff, they push two, and they're directed there. So there's not a need to have to know multiple different phone numbers, one for Minspec, or one for the city, there's one number to call for inspections here with the city.
Great. But we're building this sort of library of handouts, so to speak.
And that has been an immense improvement with the change, because it's allowed us to grow and improve ourself.
And our goal for that, just for whatever that's worth, is to continue to expand. Again, we've got, I don't know, 75, or 80, or 85 titles, we'll probably have 100 by the next year. But we're about to go undertake a code change. The 2018 code's going to be adopted in theoretically March of 2020. We're supposed to have six months before that to get ready for it, we'll see if that actually happens or not. Last year, I think we got three weeks before the new code was out. In fact, it was hard to buy a code book before the code came out, so you don't even know what it said when you were supposed to be dealing with it.
Right.
But the six-month window is a legislative standard, and it's supposed to be what we're going to have. So we're going to have to revise all our handouts to the new code, we'll be doing that. And so our goal will be to actually have them hosted on our website with links on your website that take them to ours, so that if we've, oh crap, we made a typo, we can change that, and you'll still get the right copy, because if I give you a copy, and I then have to remember to tell 20 cities to change that page two, or whatever. So it'd be easier, I think, if we can get them routed right to our site, it'll look like it's, I can't say it'll look exactly like it's North St. Paul, but it'll be titled as a North St. Paul site, so it looks like it. It's here and local. We answer the phone when you call, inspections, this is Scott, how can I help you? So it's not like it's one of those, oh, you must be someplace in, you know, California, or whatever, it seems like we're right next door, so.
Great. So it sounds like we're improving service at less cost.
It has, it has been a good experience so far, very well.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This time, it's, Scott, do you want to introduce Christine, or?
Sure, happy to.
Since being a past school board member and.
Exactly, happy to introduce our superintendent, Soria, from our school district here in North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, and looking forward to her presentation tonight on the upcoming progress in the district.
Well, thank you for having me. I'll just take a quick minute and plug in here. Make sure it works.
I was looking at that cover, I thought it was a really old book.
I know. I know, isn't that funny?
Pulled it out of the library or something.
I love tricking everybody wherever I go. I always hope if I accidentally leave it on the seat of my car, someone will not think it's valuable. Although it's getting to be a pretty old computer at this point, so. Let's see. Hopefully we can jog this over. I'm stuck for just a second, so I can grab the right document. We're almost there. I do a lot of these, so we're usually pretty quick with them here. All right. Looks like it.
There you are.
No, I'm, okay. We'll get there. We'll get there, nope, we got it. We're good, okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Furlong, and council members, thank you for having me here tonight. I know many of you have heard lots of conversation around the community about this facilities bond referendum that's coming up on the ballot very soon, next week in fact. I wanted to take just a few minutes with you to just walk through a little bit more detail about that. I know you've had many questions, many of you have already had conversations with me about it, and have come to our community meetings, and many conversations around the community about it, but thought I would just walk through a little bit of the background. As I say to every organization, every group I speak to, my job is never to tell anyone how to vote, I'm trying to tell everybody why we got to the point of putting this on the ballot. I think it's just important for the community to understand how we got from point A to point B, and why we ended up in the place that we're at right now. With every presentation that I give, I like to always remind people about our geography of our district. We all know where North St. Paul, Maplewood, and Oakdale. We're also the northern part of Woodbury, a little bit of Lake Elmo, Pine Springs, and Landfall as well. I also like to make sure people know how we kind of got where we are. We didn't just wake up one day and decide, well, let's just have this big item on the referendum, ballot referendum in May, and get the whole community chatting about it. We started back in 2016 with a really serious conversation about our facilities. We started back in 2016 with a really serious conversation about our facilities. You might recall that year, we actually had an operating levy on the ballot that fall. And an operating levy, by the way, is very different than a facilities bond referendum. Facilities bonds are for construction and building. And the last time our school district had one of these was 1994. So that was back when the district built North High School and Skyview Community School. That was the last time we had a facilities bond referendum. And facilities bonds are for building, construction bulldozers. Operating levy could be used for any number of projects, including operating expenses, could be for staffing, it could be for, and as you may recall, we had a number of different items on the ballot for our operating levy that we passed back in October or November of 2016. There were some security items on there like cameras and staffing in the buildings to keep greeters at our front doors, behavior supports, mental health supports. We also were maintaining class size, accelerated learning opportunities. Those kinds of things were on the ballot back that year. At that time, we made a commitment to our taxpayers that we wanted to be very careful that we were not wasting taxpayer dollars. And of the many things we were trying to do to make sure that we were being judicious with our spending, we wanted to look at energy savings. So we brought in a firm to help us study all of our buildings, much like you might do in your home, and look and see where you have energy leaks. Well, we did that for the whole buildings, all of our buildings, of which we own over twenty buildings. And we brought in a firm to kind of do a really deep dig into if we ever were to be able to reinvest in our buildings and prioritize spending, where should we start if we want to save on energy costs? So we did that. And along with this big recommendation that came out of that of how to save money energy-wise, we also came away with a whole lot of other conversations about how we were having issues with building use, traffic flow problems and all kinds of things. Because once you start studying all these areas of your buildings, you start realizing all these other issues you're having. We always knew we had them, but we kind of got them organized into a big report that kind of came out. We, of course, in that conversation, started looking at the codes. As you all know, if you're in the construction world at all, you don't have to bring buildings up to code necessarily unless you touch them. If you start doing construction, then you have to bring things up to code. If you're not doing construction, you can kind of wait till you do construction projects and then you have to bring things up to code. So we started doing code reviews to see, well, how, how many codes were we behind on and which areas would we have to be thinking about if we were to ever start doing any construction projects? So that all began back in 2016. We started a lot of different conversations. One of the things we know is that almost all of our buildings are over fifty years old. And in the era that our schools were built, we did school very differently. So back in the day, you would have twenty classrooms, twenty teachers, principal's office, a gymnasium, cafeteria. And you didn't provide the kinds of services we now provide in public school systems. Nowadays, we provide special education programs. We provide pull-out, small group instruction for struggling learners. So we use data. When we know students are falling behind in reading and math, we'll do a small group extra lesson with them to help them get caught up. We know that we provide speech services for students who need it. We provide English language services for students who are new to the country. They have, we have funding that comes from the federal government that gives us some teachers who help teach English to students. We have counselors and social workers that work with students who are struggling. All of these people require spaces to meet with our kiddos. They all come with certain funding, never enough, but we do have funding that comes with them and we have legal requirements to provide these services. So over the years, our chief teachers have gotten really creative. And if you've seen any of these presentations or if you've been in our schools, you know what happens in our school systems. We have found that especially in our elementary schools, and a lot of these pictures will come from there, we take what used to be open spaces, an atrium or an open lobby or a space, and we've carved it up. Our teachers are very creative and they've created spaces where there used to be open areas. They've created homemade room dividers. They sometimes use office furniture, but sometimes just bookcases to create spaces to meet with kids. Many times they'll meet in the hallways, which is very typical in schools across everywhere is doing the same kind of work. You know that you can't put a bunch of furniture in hallways permanently because our fire marshals don't like that kind of thing, right, Scott? And they have to have places to evacuate our students in case of an emergency. And this is what has happened over time is the problem has just grown. And what, these photos I'm sharing with you are simply pictures I've taken walking around with my own phone. They are not staged or, or produced by some professional who went around to try to make a case. This is just me walking around our district one week saying, this is the kind of stuff we're facing right now. On the left, you see a picture of a basement storage room that I found a teacher working with small groups of students. She was bringing kids down into the basement, walking through the storage junk to get a space because that was the only place she could work with small groups. On the right, you see an example of a school library that had been moved up onto a school stage. This was actually Cowan. And since then, they've moved their library into the basement. I should say that, since I took this picture. But again, a lot of our elementary schools have lost their school libraries because we've needed those spaces for instructional areas to work with kids. We now have moved school libraries onto mobile carts or gotten rid of them altogether. We have shower stalls all over this district. I've been told by our, our engineers who've been around a long time that back in the day, these boilers, you literally needed to climb into them to clean them and, and do the kind of work they did. And they'd have to be, they'd be filthy at the end of the workday. And that was before a lot of rules and requirements by OSHA came into play where you actually couldn't breathe in these kinds of toxic things. And people would climb into these boilers and get filthy, but they needed to shower at the end of the day. So we have showers everywhere. Our showers that are sprinkled in every single building throughout the district have even become office spaces. On the left is a social worker's office. That's a permanent office for a social worker. On the right, you can see another shower stall that was being used by a principal three days a week. He was giving up his own office three days a week so that people who did service children could use his own office as a place to work with kids, school, social worker and others who are teaching kids in small groups. He even had a phone line put in there and an internet access so that he could make phone calls to parents while housing himself out of this shower stall. If you read the Woodbury Bulletin article that just came out today, he was interviewed actually about that. He's now moved his office to a mobile cart in the hallway and put a school secretary in this shower stall. On the left, you see an electrical closet, another person who is, you can appreciate that she wanted to make it cute for children, but again, not a place that you want to work with our most struggling learners. But again, not a good place for people to be working with, with kiddos. On the left, you see a teacher who's, and this was just taken like two weeks ago, a teacher is entering some data while a young person is reading to her. It's a reading intervention class. And what you don't see is that red curtain that's all set up there is actually covering that toilet that's on the right side of the screen. This is how desperate people have become for spaces to do teaching in our schools that they've actually been teaching in spaces like showers and toilet stalls. And like I said, I didn't create these pictures. This is just me walking around. But that's kind of the problem that's happened over the time is we haven't, we haven't renovated the buildings. On the left, you can see, because I mentioned when our schools were built, we didn't provide special education services. And one of the problems we also have is that we do not have really well wheelchair-accessible buildings right now. These pictures here are from an elementary school. We have a middle school student at Maplewood this year in an electric wheelchair who literally couldn't get into the nurse's office because it's not wheelchair-accessible, our nurse's office at one of our middle schools in this current school year. And part of the problem is in the past, I guess we've always just asked them to go to a different school, which is not legal. I mean, it's legal to ask them, but if they ever did not want to, we have to provide an opportunity for them to stay, which we have done this year. But there are still many parts of that building, including the boys' locker room and other areas, that are not accessible because there are steps. We have many areas of our, our district that really have not been properly renovated to make them accommodating the different kinds of learners that we serve and the needs that our students have. And in this example, you can see another example of a shower stall that's being used. This is a multiple needs program. For medically fragile students, multiple needs means they have either physical disabilities combined with cognitive or developmental delay issues. And we have created spaces that are not necessarily ideal for the kind of programming that we offer. Another shower stall being used for students who have toileting or diaper changing. Sometimes we have very big kids who need to be changed because of the needs that they have. This is a classroom for a multiple needs program. Teachers teach with students who are in these wheelchairs and have multiple needs. In the back, you see another changing station where kids are toileted and changed there. And this teacher with her spouse on the weekend put together her, on her own time, a privacy curtain so that they could do proper changing there in a privacy setting. Again, in an ideal setting, you would have a, a space that was designed for that kind of a need inside of a school where you're offering that kind of a program. Again, when we get into the, talking more about it, if we had the opportunity to build the, the school, design it the way we wanted to, we would build it for the kinds of programming we offer in our district, including for multiple needs and for the kinds of needs of our students as well as how we need to transition students in wheelchairs and also for toileting needs and all those kinds of things. Obviously, there's issues with some disrepair. When we talk about our high schools, there's definitely crowding issues going on. This is a picture of Tartan High School. Tartan is a tight space right now. It's crowded. One of our issues at our schools, and this is true for all of our schools, not just our high schools, but when we talk about school safety, and that's one of our big, big issues with this whole proposal, we want to talk a little bit about secure entrances, and I'll tell you that in a few minutes. But one of the big ones is, in modern school design, you design school buses to enter on one side of a building and parent drop off and pick up on another side of the building. They don't intersect at the same door and in the same entrance way. In our buildings, they do because they were designed in an era where kids walked to school and you didn't really have all this busing and parent driving and all of that. And you'll see in this picture right here at Tartan, that happens when you add the buses, the parent drop off and pick up, and then you also add in a bunch of teen drivers. It's not a recipe for safety. We have that same issue at most of our schools right now already. And that's a big part of our safety proposal is redesigning the, the drop off and pick up zones for our schools so that we can separate that traffic flow. So that's a key issue. We also know, and we'll talk about that in our enrollment trends, that we're gonna need more space at Tartan, given the huge development, housing developments coming in Oakdale. Although they're slow to come, we know they're coming eventually. They're not quite as quick as the ones coming here in North St. Paul, which have just sprouted right up out of the blue so quickly. But the ones in Oakdale, we're told, are still coming and they'll just take a little longer to get here. North St. Paul, you all know, is our newest building. This is when the last facilities bond referendum was passed. And for some of you who've been around a while, you probably remember it vividly. I'm so grateful. I was not the superintendent at that time. I can't even imagine how difficult those school board meetings must have been, especially when you're trying to put a, a new high school right in the middle of a city where there's houses and people live there. Most schools, high schools are built on seventy to eighty acres of land. North High was built on under twenty acres of land. So it's very tight in its space that it's in. And as you probably know, living in North St. Paul, from the, pretty quickly after it was built, it was pretty much already overcrowded. So North High School, the Old North High School, which is where the District Education Center is, is just where my office is, is still used as an overflow space. So every hour of the day, every bell, kids walk down the block and go up three flights of stairs. And they still use three, the third floor classrooms that are still in the Old North High, which is the District Education Center. So part of our challenge is that it's cold and windy and rainy, but also when we talk about school security, it's very difficult to have a school locked down properly when you don't have your students all in one place. So part of our proposal is also to put an addition on the very front entrance of North High that would actually be multiple stories so we could put the secure entrance and also some additional classrooms so students wouldn't have to be walking down the block anymore. We're watching the population shifts. I had to edit this slide a few weeks back when I saw this Star Tribune article about North St. Paul and your sudden population growth expected here. We're watching the demographic changes. We know the homes coming in Oakdale. There's a new development coming in that northern part of Woodbury, like where the Trader Joe's and the shopping is, which by the way, is in our district. That area is gonna, potentially be getting a new apartment complex there. We know that the Crosswinds School, which has been purchased by St. Paul Public Schools just across the border, is gonna be opening in the fall and could pull middle school enrollment away from our district. So we're kind of watching the ebb and flow of all directions here. You've probably heard about this debt forecast. We keep talking about it. It's a pretty big deal for us. These projects we're proposing, which is basically to renovate our entire school district and put secure entrances and reroute these drop off and pick up zones and all these pieces, is a big project. The total cost is about $275 million and that's not a small ticket price. The reason, and you've probably also heard that the average increase, the increase for the average homeowner would be about $5 a month. And in our district, the average home is about $200,000. So obviously, somebody who has a $150,000 home would pay a little less. 3M would pay a heck of a lot more. It's all relative. We do have a tax calculator on our website so people could enter their own home value and see what their potential amount would be. The reason it can be a $5 increase per month is because, while this is a big project going on, there would be a whole lot of other debt coming off. And facilities bonds, they are done differently than an operating levy. The bonds are sold in stages. And they would be sold in stages as the debt comes off in a way that we could actually keep the taxes fairly level and only propose an increase of about $5 per month for the average homeowner. There's a lot of conversation about that, so we can talk more about that if you have more questions. But the long and short of it is, people sometimes get confused because Roseville, Roseville right next door, just did a facilities bond proposal for a smaller level of a project, but the homeowner increase was a lot more. And people often don't understand, well, how can you have a bigger project and your increase is a lot smaller for the average homeowner? And it all has to do with what kind of a debt load is the district carrying when you, when you propose a new project like that. Our goals for new renovations, obviously, safety and security is the number one piece. And when I talk about secure entrances, in modern school design, you don't have a school office in the middle of the building. All of our schools were designed in an era where you put the school office in the middle of the building because that's friendly. Everybody, all the classes can have it, be around it. Now you want school offices at the front of the building so that people can meet and greet and screen visitors. With a double vestibule entrance, somebody can come in the front door and immediately be routed into the office so somebody can greet them and screen them. If you think about like North High School, if you're allowed in the building right now, you're in the building and you have access to the whole building. In a modern design, you would be routed into the office, you'd have a conversation with somebody. And even at that point, if you were allowed ever into the rest of the building, someone would have to take their badge and let you out of that office into the rest of the building. And there would be zones for lockdown. So even if someone were allowed in, there's, think of like a hospital. There's zones that would be locked down and you would only have access to certain areas if you were allowed that kind of access. We can talk more about that. I know you have other items on your agenda. But school safety, for us, the two key ingredients are the safe entrances, which means changing the footprint of the building, moving those offices and putting these double vestibule entrances. There's a technology component as well for push-button lockdowns and door hardware for lockdowns, but also the rerouting of the traffic for the drop off and pick up zones. There is some, looking at how we can renovate and put some different furnishings into the classrooms, that's actually a very small part of the budget, but we do want to look at that. We're trying to put more options in our schools for some online classes and some blended classes. So we want to have a place where students, like, let's say you had a third period that's an online class, you could have a place where you could go and do that work to actually give us an ability to actually augment and add more courses to our current course catalog so that students could maybe take a class, even if there aren't a lot of other students who might want to take that class, we could offer it in our school if, if we did some online programming. I'll just say this, we started it with a lot of conversations. You may have heard in the fall of 2017, we, we had this one brainchild that maybe we could save room in our elementaries by moving fifth grade up to middle school and create space in all of our elementary schools. And we had a lot of conversations with parent groups and ideas, just to say, what would you guys think of this idea? There was some mixed feedback, but overall, people thought, no, let's not do that. So we went back to the drawing board and, and had a lot of different proposals. Last summer, we did a survey of the community. We hired Springstead Incorporated to help us do a survey. We spent some time with school groups. We started with our own staff and parent groups at the school sites, especially those most affected, to see how they would feel about these plans. We made some tweaks to those plans and then we started taking those conversations out to broader and broader audiences. This proposal does propose consolidations, a consolidation from fourteen schools to eleven. And that's a really big deal. And I don't want to in any way try to tell you it's not, as you well know. And so part of the overall thinking in that is that we want to be more nimble for future economic ebb and flow. Every two years, school districts, and this is true everywhere, are subject to what happens at the legislature. So our whole entire budget hangs on what happens. And so back in 2015, there was an enormous budget cut. A hundred teachers were laid off in this district. We want to be really planful and so we can have some operating efficiencies if we can have a little bit bigger schools, but a little bit less, running some smaller buildings and try to have a little more operating efficiency. So that's one of the goals. The second goal is that with our facilities planning, our construction dollars can go a lot further if we can actually do these buildings really well instead of trying to do more Band-Aids across lots of buildings. In our proposal, we actually proposed building two new schools. We've done two projects already. You've seen Richardson and Castle are two of them. When you try to retrofit and renovate old buildings and you try to make them work for what you're trying to do today, they become more and more expensive as you uncover more and more layers once you're in them. You see these kinds of multiple needs programming and the things we need. We know there's some cost efficiencies to be had if you can actually build them the way you want from the ground up. There's only two places in our district we own enough acreage to do that. One is at the site at Maplewood Middle School, and the other is at the site at Eagle Point Elementary. In both those sites, we own a significant acreage, and we could actually build a school on the property and then take down the existing site. There's no other place we own acreage to do that, so the others would all just be remodeling and renovating of the sites that are there. So, obviously, you've probably already heard that the consolidation would go from nine elementary schools to seven, and that we'd be going from three middles to two, which would mean the elimination of Maplewood Middle School. One of the things about this is that Maplewood students currently, when they're in Maplewood, they get split between Tartan and North when they go to high school. That would no longer happen because everybody would stay with their peers up. Everybody who would go to John Glenn would stay on up for North, and everybody that would be at Skyview would stay on up to Tartan. And we would at least, part of some feedback we got from a lot of family conversations early on is that they did like that conversation about staying together. I already talked to you about the finances of it. Our attendance boundaries will change, not till a little later in all of this process. We're watching all the housing densities and all of that, but I wanna make sure people are clear about that. That's not on the ballot, but it will happen. If all of this does happen, if this does go through with an election, none of these changes would take place eventually until fall of '22 at the earliest. If this passes May 14th, it'll be just the beginning of many, many, many community meetings and conversations. So, with that, I know we've had, it's a lot to say in a short time, but everything I just presented to you is on our website, including this presentation with me doing a voiceover of this presentation. So, with that, I'll take any questions or comments you might have.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions for Christine? No one?
Very good.
Wow.
It's a big, it's a big, big conversation. I know that.
I guess I'm curious about one thing. You, I know you came to us for Richardson this year has been worked on. Now, the money from that came from a levy, correct, that was not...
Here, I'll help you with that. So, the two projects that already have been underway, Richardson and Castle, those are not part of this referendum proposal. And they got started, they got started with some seed money from the sale of Valley Crossing Elementary. That's a school that we used to jointly own with Stillwater School District and South Washington County. Our three districts used to own that school, and it was in Woodbury. It still is in Woodbury, but it's owned now by South Washington District. We were in a 10-year joint powers agreement with them. When that expired, we all agreed that we were no longer gonna do a jointly-led school anymore. And so, South Washington School District, 833, decided to buy the building, and then when they bought it, they paid the proceeds to Stillwater School District and our school district, 'cause we were the other co-owners of it. Now, that money is not enough to remodel Richardson and Castle naturally. We have other dollars in our district that we can actually have authority to levy taxpayers for long-term facilities maintenance dollars. We can only use those dollars to fix things and renovate, so replace a door for a door, lights for lights, windows for windows. So, we had to braid and blend funding. The parts of those construction projects that were new additions, new things, we had to use the Valley Crossing money for that, because anything that was new and different and expansion had to be new money. But inside of those buildings, then when we wanted to replace the carpet or replace the lighting or anything, replace something that was still there and it was not gonna be different, it was just upgrading it, we could use that money that we're allowed to use by the state to fix things. So, we kinda braided and blended, but it was all money the district already had. And we also had a capital savings account that we have, we've kinda saved some money up over time for some projects, and that all went into those two schools. But it's not enough to do anything more than those two schools.
Okay, I guess I was thinking that there was, was it the levy from the high school? Did that come off?
So, the levy from when we, from the high school, the North High High School and Skyview Community School, those dollars, those bond dollars that we levied back in '94, those are starting to get paid off now, and that's why we're going out to voters to say, will you reinvest now so we can buy some new bonds and do some new investment? That's what this project will be.
So, those didn't get just turned over and used into...
Into those, no.
Into Richardson?
No, not at all. Those, if we get reinvestment and approval from our taxpayers on May 14th, we'll have permission to buy some new bonds, and that money that would've been that we, well, it's not, it's new money. It would be new debt. It would be like, we're paying off our mortgage from North High and Skyview, and we want permission from our voters to take out a new mortgage now so we can renovate our other schools. But we had already had other funds saved up so we could do the Sky, Richardson and Castle. So, they're not in any way connected to these dollars that we have here on the ballot for May 14th.
Okay. I guess, so all the schools that are in North St. Paul are gonna be used in one way or another. I, I, what, it says Webster's gonna close, but you're gonna, what are you gonna do with...
So, Webster, the proposal is to close Webster, but we're not gonna get rid of that building because we wanna see, as we figure out the new boundaries, we wanna see if we can maybe move some district programs there. We have district programs around the district in lots of places, and we might, like, we were looking at, we have adult education mixed with senior programming at Gladstone, and we have Harmony, we have a lot of programs around the district that we know we can use that space at Webster. We are still gonna figure out which programs are gonna go there, but we're not planning to demolish the building or sell the building right now. We're planning to keep it. We'd like to be able to move some different, other programming there.
Okay, so what other schools in North St. Paul, just North High?
So, Cowern Elementary.
Oh.
Right next door.
I didn't see Cowern.
Yeah, Cowern will get a whole new entrance. To their front office will get moved to the front, so they'll get the secure entrance, and they'll get all the new technology that goes along with it. They'll get the new furnishings on the inside, and they'll get the new renovation on the inside, the new carpeting, the new redesign on the inside, but they'll get all the new security, and then the push-button lockdown systems and the hardware for all the lockdown. They'll get the new front entrance, so all the safety features that everybody else will. But we're not putting an addition on Cowern. It's not gonna be one that's gonna be made bigger. It'll be the same size, but it'll get all the safety features as all the others.
So, Cowern will get the busing on one side and the parents on the other, so that's all this parking on Margaret Street will go away and into the parking lot.
Well, I'm not gonna say that tonight. That is not necessarily yet planned for, but we are definitely looking at our options right now. 'Cause we hear about it too. Just like you do, we do too.
I live there.
I know. I know. We do too. Absolutely, we do. Yes.
Going through there is...
Oh, I know.
A challenging task.
We, we, we get the calls too.
That school in particular has a real problem with...
Yes, it is.
With the parking, and you know how nice if the school could just go in and put no parking on their side.
I know.
And now, now we have all of our residents who are on the other side.
I know.
But even back to a point, once cars park on both sides, that really is difficult for two cars to get through, especially in the winter.
In the wintertime, yeah. And so, part of, we're gonna be looking at all of our designs for how to make our drop-off and pickup zones safer, safer, once we, if, once we get this through. We've got a few years of planning to try to figure out how those can all be designed. And North High, like I said, is gonna have this new secure entrance, that's another North High, new secure entrance and the classroom so the kids aren't walking down the street every day as well. And we're looking at also how to make that drop-off and pickup zone safer. That parking lot is also just a real mess, trying to get people in and out of it, and it's not safe at all. So, that's another key ingredient there. Richardson will have already been taken care of by the time we get through these, as far as other North St. Paul spaces.
Tom?
Yeah, a few questions. So, on the Cowern, presumably, if you build a new elementary school on the existing Maplewood site, that you would be rebalancing some of those, some of those students into that school, because Cowern is still overcrowded, right? So, I mean, the idea is that you would have a smaller headcount at Cowern going forward if it's not adding space, yes?
Absolutely. So, part of the problem, and one of the issues in our district, is that we haven't redrawn attendance boundaries in a very long time. And districts typically do that periodically, because the population densities change in your neighborhoods over time. And so, part of the way we're gonna, we actually have done mock-ups of what the new boundaries could look like. We haven't published them, because we wanna see when the new housing comes in in all these different places. We need to see how much of it is gonna be senior living, how much of it's gonna be school-aged children. We don't wanna draw boundaries till we get a better sense of what those are gonna look like. But one thing's for sure, Richardson's gonna have greater capacity when they're finished. Castle will have greater capacity when it's finished. And so, the new school at the Maplewood site will have greater capacity for students. So, there's gonna be ability to kinda rebalance, and so, we have a really great software program that allows us to actually run models, push a button, and it'll tell us not only how many students would move, but the names and addresses and demographics. So, we have a great system for running models and mock-ups for how this could be done. And so, we're gonna continually, because we wouldn't change the boundaries for at least another three years, and our goal would be to let families know about the changes at least a good year and a half to two years ahead of that, so people have time to plan. And then, we'll work with anyone who's unhappy with the new switch, because if people want a grandfather with their peers or something happens, we'll be really mindful of how we can support families through the change years, 'cause those are always tricky. But yes, we will definitely be working to balance the numbers at all sites, so that they have the proper enrollment for the size of their buildings.
Okay. Economies of scale, you're reducing the number of schools. Has there been any study about potential cost savings from doing that? So, I mean, you'll need fewer staff, there are a few buildings that you have to maintain. I mean, I guess you're still gonna have the buildings, but they'll be used in a much different way.
Well...
Any projected savings?
Yeah, we, we have some guesstimates on paper. We're hesitant to publish them out loud, because we wanna kinda get a better sense of them, but I'll tell you this. 14 buildings to 11, there's right there immediate huge energy savings. We obviously know if we have, go from 14 schools to 11, we're gonna need 11 principals, not 14. But we really don't anticipate, if enrollment stays the same, needing fewer teachers, because we don't want class sizes to go up. We actually hope class sizes can even out. We, right now, have an imbalance of class sizes around the district, because our populations haven't been balanced out around the district. We have overcrowding and undercrowding, and it's not been evened out. So, we anticipate not, our goal is not really to see a reduction in teachers unless our enrollment changes dramatically, which we hope that's not necessarily gonna be the case, or if anything, it grows and we can hire more teachers. With more space, even though it'll be 11 schools, we're actually trying to build them with some more capacity in them, so we can be ready to grow if we need to, or shrink, if we shrink, we'll be more energy efficient and, and operating efficiencies as well. Major savings with busing. When you're busing to 11 sites instead of 14, you can put some better systems in place for some efficiencies. And I don't mean longer bus routes, actually. It's more about where you're routing your kids and how you, we have software that routes, so we don't hand-do it. It's software that finds the best way to do it. And so, there's a lot of savings that'll be had there, but most importantly, with these buildings, new mechanical systems are huge for energy savings. And so, with the proposed projects that we're looking at, a lot of these buildings that we're gonna be doing will get entirely new mechanical systems as well. Obviously, the two new elementaries, when they're built from the ground up, would be completely the most energy-efficient, because we're building them from the ground up. And the couple of them that we're gonna be going into to kinda redo some bigger changes, like John Glenn's gonna have to have some bigger changes, 'cause we need to significantly expand the building, we'll have a good opportunity in there to very likely change the mechanical systems out while we're in there. And Tartan's gonna have a decent expansion as well, 'cause we're gonna need it on that east side of the district. We're gonna be looking as to possibly changing out mechanicals while we're in there as well. And all of those would have a really big impact on, on energy savings, as well as redoing some kitchens. We have some federal dollars that come through food service funding, federal dollars that don't come from local taxpayers, by the way, that we're also braiding into these projects. And those will allow us to get some more energy-efficient appliances in our kitchens, for example. We have really outdated ovens and stoves in our kitchens, which, by the way, don't even lend themselves to dishwashing very well. Our kitchens were built too tiny for dish, there's a whole nother conversation about recycling and green, green schools, so we can talk about that too, but yes. So, we don't have an exact number, but we have a whole category list of all the different ways we can be saving.
If this passes, when would you project the remodels to the high schools to happen?
I will tell you this, the remodels to the high school will actually be the last on the list, because in order for us to be able to make the changes, we need to start with the two, if this happens, we need to start with the elementaries first, in order to be able to move the kids out of, in order to move the kids there so that we can expand the middle school. So, the elementaries and middles have to all be done and ready to open first. We can start the high schools at the same time. We're gonna, we'd have to stagger these projects out and forbidding at different stages, but the elementaries and the middles would have to go ahead of the high schools, just because in order to kinda get those things moving, they have, they're, they're gonna have boundary changes. High school kids wouldn't have boundary changes, but we have to get those pieces moving as well, but the elementaries and middles would go first and the, and the secondaries, the high schools would follow.
What's the overall timeframe for all...
Overall timeframe, if I had to predict, my goal is that the elementaries and middles actually all open and are complete by fall of '22. So, drawings, official architectural drawings, we have not commissioned yet. They're, they're not cheap, and we have sketches, obviously. We had to ballpark the pricing on all these, and we had to get oversight from the state of Minnesota on all of those pieces. But official architectural drawings will begin May 15th if this passes, and we'll have a lot of work this summer with groups and inputs and feedback, at least, at least on a couple of the elementaries and the two middles, just to get those projects started, 'cause they'd be the first ones that would have to go out to bid, probably by late fall, early winter, for construction to begin next summer, on those first projects. And then, the others would follow in sequences several months behind. High schools, I would bet, if I were to predict, would probably be done a year or so after, a year to 18 months after that, would be the goal. So, fall of '22, wrapping up, fall of '23, or spring of '24. And of course, we all know, in this business, there's never, it never works out exactly as you plan, but I, that's, that's actually a fairly cautious timeline. There was some predictions we could have it done by '21, but we were clear, we really wanna have it done well, and we wanna also have all the boundary changes happen one time and not some changes, and then reroute people again a year later. So, we're gonna wait till everything's kinda ready to go and then do the boundary changes in one year.
Great.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great question. How will it, how will it affect with, with this passing? How would it affect the deferred maintenance that's gone on for many years?
Yeah, so the deferred maintenance is that long-term facilities maintenance dollars that we're talking about, the money we can use to fix things. So, every year, the, the school board has the ability to levy taxpayers for deferred maintenance dollars. Without voter approval, the school board can raise and lower that fund. And so, our, our plan is actually to weave in some deferred maintenance dollars into some of these proposals as well. However, we also know that even though this would pass, we have kept in the budget, deferred maintenance budget anyway in this proposal, so that we are not naive enough to think there would never, so if you look at this, this graph, you see the green line? Right now, we're, we're levying that, the green is the deferred maintenance dollars that Scott's referring to. That's what we're currently levying taxpayers for fixing projects, right? In the, if, if this were to pass, the blue would be the new voter-approved funds, and the red are old bond funds coming off. The green is our placeholder, knowing we still know we're gonna have to fix some things year to year. We might have a roof repair, we might have a situation that could come about, and we know we're gonna have to, we wanna keep a fund there. Now, we may have a year where we really didn't need any, so we don't need to levy taxpayers for it, and then it could be just a nice year, we don't have to do that, and taxes could dip down again. But we do have a placeholder in there, just in case we do need to, 'cause we don't wanna be naive enough to think that just 'cause we renovated all our buildings, we aren't gonna have to fix things. Great question.
Great.
Yes.
How much does that amount to on, on the residents' taxes for your fixing of things?
Well, it's currently already in the taxes right now.
And, and what does it amount to per household?
Well, it's in the $5. I mean, it's included in that $5 proposal. Every year, it changes, so how much we've levy for the, the deferred maintenance, it changes every year in the total amount.
Oh, okay, so that the $5 that you're...
That's predicting...
You're saying for everybody can change for what you changed this other levy.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, your taxes can change any year that a district decides to raise or lower the green money. I say the green money, that's the deferred maintenance. Your taxes could change and lower any year the district decides to do that. Our boards, in all the past 10 years, and Scott knows he's been on it, has always voted to keep it pretty flat. That's been the tradition of our school board's past years, and that's been their proposed plan to keep it that way going forward. So, I would not anticipate that would change a lot, and you can see from their proposal, we already have a plan to keep a little bit in there, just so, and that's in the $5 plan already. By the way, I'll just say this, that proposed $5, and that's again an average homeowner, that's based on current homeownership in our district right now. When we have 2,000 more homes, plus 400 here, although some of those would be renters, plus others, if there's new commercial properties that come up, that pie gets shared by even more people. Those $5 could be actually less than that, when more people start sharing that load, right? So, the, the average homeowner, $5 a month, is based on current property owners right now, so over time, if all this construction really happens, there'll be more people actually sharing the load, and it could be a little bit less than that, actually. But we can't build our projections based on what people say is gonna happen in construction. We have to build it on who lives here now.
Wow.
All right.
I do have someone that's raising their hand. Don, if you'd be real quick about it.
I have never seen anything in the paper, anything about the vote, where we vote.
Oh.
Where to vote?
Didn't you get a letter?
No, I didn't get a letter.
Or a card? Every...
So, it's next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, so I'll just say this.
Where?
Okay, so I'll tell you the places to vote. So, and I've, we've sent out a few mailings and we put it in the Lilly and the Woodbury and the Pioneer Press, but I'll tell you right off the bat, if you live in, if you live in Ramsey County, there's two places you can vote, and you can actually vote early, you can vote now. In Ramsey County, you can vote at the Maplewood Library, and then there's another location on Plato Boulevard, if you've ever voted downtown. Okay, so the Maplewood Library, if you're in Ramsey County, which of course, if you're here at North St. Paul, you would be in Ramsey County. The Washington County folks have two other locations. One is the License Center in Woodbury for early voting, and another one is in Stillwater. The regular voting locations will all be open, and those will be your regular locations on May four, on, uh, May 14th. However, I will say, if you normally vote at Richardson Elementary School, because of construction, you have to go to Cowran that day because the construction is underway at Richardson. If you normally vote on Election Day at Richardson, you're going to want to go to Cowran because the construction is so bad at Richardson, there's not good parking or accessibility, and they moved the polling location to Cowran that day. Yep. But if anyone has questions, they can always call the district and we'll tell, we'll help you find your polling location, and there'll be people can answer your questions, too. Also, if anybody's watching or listening and has questions, we take calls all the time, we meet with people. This presentation, by the way, we can send you a link and you can watch it also, so.
Christine, I appreciate everything you do and wish you good luck next week.
Thank you.
Be, be good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I can give you a pen.
I would love that.
I don't think you've gotten one. We've had a couple of meetings and--
I don't think so, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Not everybody that gets up here gets a pen, so.
I'm very honored, I will wear it with pride. I did, by the way, print, this is a paper copy with my full script on it, so if you happen to be wanting to share it with anybody, I'll leave them, I'll, I'll give you each a copy and then, they're just kind of--
They're used to the school.
If you're out and about and you just, it's, it's--
Sure.
All the words I actually say when I give this presentation typically, so you can have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So our fourth presentation is the proclamation to recognize the National Police Week 2019 in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. So at this time, I'd like to read that proclamation.
It's not a proclamation, sir.
I'm sorry.
Where is it?
Yep.
Oh, there is somewhere else.
Yep. So the proclamation to recognize National Police Week 2019 in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the North St. Paul Police Department. And whereas there have been 6,211 assaults against law enforcement officers reported in 2017 resulting in approximately 17,476 injuries. And whereas, and whereas, since the first recorded death in 1786, over 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have been made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including two members of the North St. Paul Police Department. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 371 names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 158 officers killed in 2018 and 213 officers killed in previous years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Cannolite Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2019. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the Minnesota Law Enforcement Memorial Association's Annual Cannolite Vigil on the evening of May 15th, 2019. And whereas the Cannolite Vigil is part of the National Police Week, which takes place this year from May 12th through the 18th. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. And whereas the service and sacrifice of Ramsey County suburban law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the suburban Ramsey County law enforcement memorial ceremony on May 16th, 2019. Now therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of North St. Paul, Minnesota, that it formally designates May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as Police Week in the City of North St. Paul, as publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. Signed, myself, Terrence J. Furlong. At this moment, let's just like take a moment of silence to recognize all the people who have fallen and sacrificed their lives for, for our nation. It's always a hard one to read because my son is also in, in law enforcement and I pray for him every day. So at this time, we have the consent agenda in front of us. We have a, the first one is April 16, 2019 workshop meeting minutes, the April 16, 2019 regular meeting minutes, the April 16, 2019 HRA meeting minutes, the general accounts payable of 602,684.97 cents, HRA accounts payable of 2,805.21 cents, the adoption of Ramsey County All-Hazard Mitigation Plan, the continuation of funding for services provided by Youth Service Bureau, request by the American Legion for temporary extension of their on-sale liquor license to be used with their special event permit for a car show on May 19th, 2019, the separation agreement with Jeanne Day and the Police Civil Service Commission 2019 appointment. This time, if anybody would like to take any of those off the consent agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to pull item I.
This time, we'll pull item I and add that to the regular agenda. Anything else? Okay, so, motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved by Councilmember Walzak.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Sonic. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Meeting now, now open to the public. I have two people who'd like to speak. Let's have Don Benick, first one. Our friend Donald.
Donald Benick.
Welcome.
May 11th, Saturday, the food drive that the letter carriers pick up food for, it's a one-time, it's an all-time record for their one-day food drive for supply, sometimes it's all the food, food shelves for the summer. So just to tell you, and it's the 27th year that they've been doing, and they have collected, last year they collected over 71 million in the United States. Up and from 73, they have collected 1.6 billion pounds of food.
And how much did North St. Paul collect?
I didn't, I don't have that figure.
Oh, come on, Don.
I don't have that figure. Anyway, that's what I, just to tell you, the May 11th is our food drive.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And this is a card that came in the mail today, and I believe there will be a bag coming in the next couple of days.
Oh, good.
So, but this, this came in today's mail, so.
Okay.
So everyone got, got this and then should be a bag coming in the next couple of days. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. I'd like to introduce Sue Springborn.
Hello.
Welcome, Sue.
Mayor and council. I'm Sue Springborn, 2573 13th Avenue. I was just compelled to come and speak in support of the bond issue. I'm a 74-year resident of North St. Paul. I graduated from North St. Paul High School in 1963, and you all know I love North St. Paul. When we had the class reunion, Candy and I worked on the all-class reunion, the school was going to be torn down, the old school, and we arranged for a tour of that old school. I was excited, I was going to see my kindergarten room, I was going to see my chemistry room, I was so excited. We went up there, I was appalled and embarrassed and ashamed. The condition of the school, you could just see how Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid had been put on the school. And I think that is exactly what we've been doing here. I just feel compelled to ask you as citizens and anybody else to vote yes for this bond issue. I'm getting old and I want to sell my house. And all of that is so important. A good school district and good schools is important to our property value. That is one of the other things. And then, when I saw this presentation that Superintendent Sorio just did, I felt so ashamed. When I looked at those changing tables in rooms where children are being taught here and a diaper is being changed here, shame on us, shame on all of us for allowing that to go on. So, anyway, after that, I just felt very compelled to speak to you and anybody else that listened to me because I think it's important, and I hope you do, too. And I understand that as a council, you need to be just kind of neutral on the subject, but as individuals, you do not. So that's why I'm here, and that's the only thing I have to say. But I think this is going to be a test for us because I can see our city digging out of a hole, and I think this is one way to get out of that hole is to have some good schools. And I'm proud of you all for doing what we've been doing here, so thank you.
Thank you, Sue. As you see in our town, we're doing a lot of changes, so, changes are coming. We have no public hearings, so we have city business action items and recommendations, turn over to Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So we have a bid package award tonight. We have Morgan Dolly, our city engineer with WSB, here tonight to present that.
Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, always a pleasure on my end as well, too. So this item before you tonight is consideration of resolution awarding a contract for what I'll call the second half, Bid Package Two is what we're terming the contract for Project Number SAD 18-01. So that is the 2018 Street and Utility Improvement Project. To answer the question of why we're awarding a contract in 2019 for the 2018 project, you may recall, there's substantial discussion revolving some of the improvements, and this is in the project area around Silver Lake on some of those roadways. So at that time, council discussed and moved forward with the project, but it was broken into two pieces. So in 2018, we installed the utility improvement, so water main, sanitary sewer. This component of the project will complete the streets and the storm sewer utilities as well, too. So bids were opened on Thursday, April 25th. We received five bids, and the low bid was from OMG Midwest, Doing Businesses Minnesota Paving and Materials out of Rogers, Minnesota, in the amount of just over $3.1 million. I will mention that, that's a new name, but it is a familiar contractor to North St. Paul. It is the Old Hard Drives Incorporated that completed the 2015 mill and overlay of 11th Avenue west of McKnight Road. They did perform well on that project, and so I have no problem recommending the council consider award of the contract to the lowest bidder per the bids received. And so with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan? Do you know when it's going to end, when we're going to be done with this project?
Mr. Mayor, that is an excellent question on a project that lasts two years, and, you know, certainly staff, I think all of us are sympathetic to the residents that have been working and living and, and in and around the construction activity from last year. This year, you know, with the award, one of the next steps is to request a schedule from the contractor, which we don't have at this time, certainly. But we anticipate that, you know, we're looking at hopefully an early fall completion with, you know, final cleanup. The nice thing, I think, with, and we talked about this when we talked about doing two separate contracts, is that a lot of the underground work is done already. And so really, the focus can be moving forward on, on streets construction, which generally goes faster than some of the water main work, some of the deeper utility work. So as soon as we have a schedule, we will communicate that with council and with the public, using, you know, the email update, the hotline and all that information and communication tools will be in place throughout the year, throughout the second half of the project, just as it was last year. And so we'll communicate some updated schedule information in terms of a start and also a completion or anticipated completion as best we can estimate. Obviously, there's weather and a lot of things that are out of our control, but we'll provide that information as soon as we have it.
We've had a lot of residents asking us, you know, when, when, when would the end be? So do you think a, a final would be done this year?
Absolutely, yeah. The, we always come back in the final, or the, the year after we build the roads, just to do that last little bit of paving. So, but the impact of the neighborhood is pretty minimal for that. That's something that usually only takes a couple of days to complete and there's no excavation. I will mention that, you know, as with past projects, we do pay special attention to restoration and growing grass in the boulevards, just as we have in the past project, we're going to be working with residents, so they will have a choice between sod or seeding. Different people have kind of different preferences depending on how they maintain their yards. And sod is kind of that instant gratification version of, you know, it's instantaneously green, but the homeowners do need to take some responsibility for ownership and maintenance of that within a certain timeframe, which we'll communicate. Some of the seeding areas, as we know in past projects, they take some more time and attention to kind of grow in, and, and we'll be evaluating that. And on top of that, knowing that if we do need to touch up some, some areas in 2020, that we'll, we'll be working with residents on that long-term. But at this point, we don't know which areas would be seeded, which would be sod. Again, that's, we're going to, at past council direction, we're going to give that choice to the residents.
Okay, good. Any other questions from, go ahead, Don?
Morgan, I'm sorry if you mentioned this somewhere in there, but how did the bids compare to expectations?
Councilmember Sonic, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So that's a good question, and I think you may have been the one to ask as we broke it up into two contracts, you know, what is the outlook? In looking at the numbers, when you're doing projections a year in advance, and then actually seeing the bid results come in, you know, you, you don't exactly hit every category exactly, but if you add it all up in aggregate, I guess what I can represent to you now is that it appears as if we've had some cost savings in some areas of the project, other things have cost more money. Right now, I think that we're on track to be on budget, I guess, which I think, given, you know, sometimes there's risks involved in, in breaking it up. Over time, prices increase, you don't know what's going to be, you know, the price of labor, the price of pipe, the price of oil or fuel or trucking, you know, in a consecutive year. But with the planning and, and building in some contingencies with the, the bond and with the budgeting for this project, it appears at this time that, that we should be tracking very close to what we anticipated. And, you know, I'll be working with staff, certainly as we move through this, had a conversation with the interim finance director going into this meeting, that we anticipate to keep a close eye on that, and hopefully things come in the way that we hope they will by the end of this summer, or we'll have a much better idea.
Great, thanks.
Okay, at this time, the motion is for a resolution accepting the bids and awarding a construction contract for the 2018 street. Is it 2018 or 2019?
We're calling it the 2018 Street and Utility Improvement Project, and that's SAD 1801, but the contract just needs its own designator, so we've added Bid Package Two.
Okay, so 2018 Street and Utility Improvement Project, Bid Package Number Two, City Project Number SAD 18-01. At this time, a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Sonic.
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Councilmember Walzak. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Morgan.
Thank you.
City Manager, do that.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Next item that we have is the contract approval for supervisory unit with IBEW Local 160. It's a labor contract, the first one that we're, we're bringing to you for your, your approval this evening. Attorney Soren Maddock has been working with us through these negotiations on all the different groups, so this is the first one that we're bringing to you tonight for this evening for your consideration and acceptance. It's been, we had tentative approval and there, the group has voted and approved it, so now it's on the council agenda for our approval on this end. I can also tell you that we're planning to bring at the upcoming meeting, three additional contracts. We have tentative agreements with those and votes that are taking place with the, it's the hope and plan that those will be at our upcoming council meeting, in the upcoming meeting. So, Soren, maybe if you have any comment on the, on the processes or anything, anything to add to this?
I don't think so, other than that, you know, we, we've met a few times in closed session in labor negotiations to talk about it, laid, council's laid out parameters in terms of expectations, and we, we feel that this contract achieves the expectations set forward by council. And so it's, it's a good, it's a good one to get done, to get moving on these things. And as Scott said, you know, we've got six bargaining units to deal with. This is a first one, we hope to bring three more to you next time, and then we are meeting with the final two bargaining units later on this week. So we've, I think we've made good progress. There were certain changes that we were making that weren't easy, and the bargaining units have been receptive to that. So it's, it's been good. As you know, labor's your biggest expense and it's also one of your biggest assets, so it's, it's been good to work with folks and it's, it's been a, you've had some, some back and forth, but that's the nat, that's the nature of the beast, but it's, it's been a, a good process from my perspective.
Good. Thank you.
Mayor, do you have one, one correction to, to make in the, in the memo that was in here on the, we talked about the vacation accrual and carryover. It listed there that there was a, there was a change from 11 to 14 years employment, from 200 hours to 140 hours. That was, that's actually from 160 hours to 200 hours.
We'll make that correction in the, in the, okay. So at this time-- We'll make that correction in the, okay. So at this time, a motion to approve the resolution approving the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one collective bargaining agreement between the city of North St. Paul and International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local Number One sixty, representing the North St. Paul supervisors. At this time, I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved by councilmember Sonic.
I'll second.
Second by councilmember Thorson. In their discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. City manager, do that.
That's the last item that I have under business items?
We added.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can handle that one.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Sure.
On the consent agenda was a separation agreement with Jeannie Day, the former finance director. It is something that I've had a chance to talk to folks individually about, and we touched on it in the work session. I think the item before us is there's support for it, but just not universal support. So it's been removed from the consent agenda. If there are any other questions on it, I can certainly stand for it. Otherwise, if there's a motion to approve that agreement, we'd entertain that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councilmember Sonic. Is there a second?
I'll second, your honor.
Seconded by councilmember Walzak. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, I'm agreeing. Your aye, your nay.
Okay, nay, sorry.
Four to one.
Four to one.
Four to one. So motion carries. City manager, do that. You can go right into your, I won't skip you this time, if you want to go right into your reports. So, city manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor, council. So just some updates and things that are going on. Again, no particular order. Road restrictions came off today. So road restrictions have been in place since early spring, late winter, which really holds back our contractors and projects that are going on. So those came off today, so you'll probably start seeing lots more activity in and around the communities now with that off. Our fire department today conducted a controlled burn up at the Southwood Nature Park today to burn off some of the prairie restoration areas up there. So that was conducted today. It was actually a great day for it in anticipation of the rain that's coming tomorrow or later in the week. So the-
And no complaints of smoke or?
Nope.
The windows open.
Yep, that went very well. So that was done today. Again, we mentioned the contract work that we've been working on with negotiations. That's been occupying a lot of time, but we're nearing completion with that. So that's been a very good, good process. Downtown trash and recycling, I think I mentioned this previously, that we're looking at containers for the downtown trash and recycling containers is what's down there is minimal and disrepair and not very, not very sightly. So we've been continuing to work with that, and likely at our next meeting, we'll be bringing a resolution that we'll have to ask council for pass to funding, to receive funding through a grant through Ramsey County for the purchase of those containers. So that is still in place, and we'll be bringing that to the next meeting for your consideration to follow that process through. Been working on a police, police officer hiring process. So we've gone through the application process, receiving applications. Police department conducted their physical agility portion of that process this past weekend, and we'll be continuing on with that process for that overall hiring process. So that work is going on right now with that also. Design, I guess, Design Historical Review Commission, I just want to get that back out there, and we will talk about getting them reengaged and how we want to bring that together with the Planning Commission, with the projects that we have upcoming with the downtown that are going to be soon coming online. I just want to make sure that we, we're gonna look at getting those people reengaged with that process.
I know, I know the commissioners are excited to get back and involved, but we just have to figure out how that's gonna play with the Planning Commission.
Yep. So I just want to bring that up, that we want to, we're gonna get working on that and get something brought to you on that. The MNI Homes, progress is well underway. If you haven't been by, the South Anchor Site, Seventh and Third, I encourage you to drive by up there and see the activity. The first four homes are well underway. The foundations are in, and they're moving along. The soil correction is also in process up there, and you'll see piles of broken concrete block that's there. It's not stuff they're hauling in. It's stuff that they're taking out of the site. They're, they have a sifter up there, so they're separating all the material and hauling it out as they, as they can, and then recompacting the building pads. So that work is going on. It's moving quickly. Nice to see progress going on up there.
And we talked about a grand opening when they're built.
Right. We will, we will have a grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony in August when the completion of the projects that they're building now. In anticipation and preparation, there will be an opening house there for the parade homes. So that will be on that schedule. As I mentioned earlier, in the budget, or in the workshop tonight, this week, we'll be starting the budget process with staff. This Thursday, we'll have a meeting with staff to start the budget process for the two thousand twenty budget year, and we'll obviously keep you posted with that and start looking at scheduling meetings in the upcoming time. Those are the items I have for now.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. General, or reports of council and commissions, committees, councilmember Sonic.
Yeah, the Planning Commission will be having our second monthly meeting for May next, Thursday on the sixteenth. As you know, the variance request for Twelfth Avenue for the lot there, twenty-five fifty-seven across from the Veterans Memorial was pulled today, and that is because there were some concerns over the design as we were looking at it. There were about two and a half feet missing in the width of the design, so we weren't really sure what we were recommending approval for because of the, the width of the house and the width of the side lots outside of the house did not add up to the overall width of the actual lot. So, so there's some changes there. And then I think there were some design changes with the house anyway, due to the basement, I believe. So we wanted to, the Planning Commission felt it would be best to see the actual design before moving forward.
And Mayor, council, if I could just comment on that. I was, yeah, very disappointed in the plan that was brought forth. I mean, I guess what, you know, the looking for is a variance for the setback, but very disappointed in the plan. I made the comment to Molly, our planner, that that house plan will not be going forward. As you mentioned, the basement was completely out of the ground. It was a lookout basement. It's difficult enough to have a two-story home on a lot of that size, and then to elevate the house with the basement completely out, there's no reason, no call for it whatsoever. It's almost like, I mean, with all due respect, it's almost like they took a plan from someplace else in the country where there's bedrock or something, and they couldn't put a basement down. So that message has definitely been given, and they will be redesigning, and we'll be back with a plan, and they'll also be in attendance at the meeting.
Were you aware of the missing two feet?
Yes.
Okay. There was also a design on the side walls of the house. The house facing the street had no windows, which was odd. So it was like a big wall. And then the other side had plenty of windows facing right next to the neighbor's house. So it seemed like it should be flipped.
And a full set of stairs into the garage, down to the garage level. I mean, it was, yes. It will, it will be corrected, and it's, you know, the Veterans Group and the Batsy Foundation is working on it. They're apologetic for it and, you know, concerned about that, but they, it's still, it's a project that they're committed to and want to make sure that it's a good project for us here.
Good. That's all. Thanks.
Councilmember Walzak.
The Environmental Commission with their tree giveaway, or tree adoption, last Saturday went really well. We had fifty trees, and all of them were picked up, but three. And we had a lovely waiting list of people that couldn't have been happier to get down there and pick up a tree when we told them that if you're not there by eleven, you're out of luck. And I think we were out of there by ten after eleven. The people that we called came immediately. They were anxious to get the trees. In fact, one person came at ten and waited, just to make sure. So it was moved inside this year. We moved it into Public Works this year, and, boy, that was just really slick. Very, very efficient, even more so than out in the parking lot. And I, we are hopeful that we can do it that way in the future. That was a big improvement to the way we'd been doing it, and less chaotic than it seemed to work out when we did it in the parking lot. So very successful and looking forward to next year.
I heard a lot of good compliments about it, just the way, and what kind of, what was the most popular tree?
Oh, maple.
Maple, one they're not supposed to get. Maple was the big one this year.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, Ramsey County League of Local Government will be hosting a get-together on May thirtieth over at the John Rose Oval in Roseville from five to eight. Be networking, food, and everybody can come. Park and Rec, the egg hunt was very successful again. We were very pleased with the, you know, all the people that came. Had a good day. Then I know the mayor attended the last park and rec meeting, and there was some dialogue about the eighty-eight costs, and is the city gonna pay for those, or should come out of the park fund, because the park fund doesn't have all that money. So that might be a workshop item, because they were concerned about it, and we didn't have the answer for them. And I know, it's a money issue, but they're concerned. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson.
Just Ramsey, Washington Suburban Cable Commission meeting will be this Thursday, and that'll be my first one that I attend. I wasn't able to make the last one, so. And I was one of the three that got the last, I got the Charlie Brown tree, the very last one that no one wanted. It was more of a stick-looking thing, but it's planted in the ground and been watered, so we'll see. Maybe it'll turn out well, so.
It'll thrive.
That's it.
And I have nothing. General business, councilmember Sonic.
I have nothing, thanks.
Councilmember Walzak.
I have nothing, your honor.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, the garage sale, all citywide, coming up next week. There's still time. There's forty people involved. I'm one of them. And there'll be sheets downstairs on the counter, and it'll be on the website, all the addresses. But Laurie says we have room, but if you really want to register, do it soon, so she can get it ready to go. And the pub crawl was very good. They raised over ten thousand dollars. It was a great showing, and the bar owners were very happy. And I want to wish everybody Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Oh, very nice. Councilmember Thorson.
Just one item, more of a request from the Parks Commission. I noticed in, going through some information review in their last meeting minutes, that looks like their tennis courts at Silver Lake are scheduled to get repaved. Is that, Scott, do you know how far along that? Is that something that's already been scheduled and paid for, or how far along? Okay. Just wanted to ask if maybe the consideration hasn't been thought about, possibly looking at replacing the tennis courts with park shelter, with bathrooms instead? And I know that there's been some reference to a previous survey that was taken, and Silver Lake obviously is one of the more heavily used parks, and that was also a question about what residents felt they'd like to see more of in the parks, and it was shelters with bathrooms. Now, the existing bathroom there is kind of old and dated, and I'm not sure where we're at with the revisions of the park improvement plan as we've been checking off these other projects with, obviously, Casey Lake and Housie Park. But I don't know if that was something that was even on the radar of the Parks Commission or what, but I just thought I'd bring it up as if things aren't too far along yet to, maybe they could incorporate with this new survey they're gonna put together, maybe specifically ask if residents would prefer to see tennis court repaved there or possibly replaced with a park shelter. And also, too, what the status is of the McKnight Field complex and those tennis courts, and if there's a plan to consider redoing those, or if that park is gonna get repurposed for something else. Because I just hate to see, you know, if the decision ultimately is we're gonna reinvest in the McKnight Field complex and redo all those tennis courts, and then we've already redone the one at Silver, might not make too much sense.
Well, I don't think the plan is to redo McKnight Fields, because that was more for the high school, and the high schools now move their courts over to, John Glen.
John Glen.
Yes. But I think that's discussion with the school district of what to do down there for those courts, you know, if it goes back to the park and rec, or if it's made into more parking down there for the fields, because I know they're always looking for parking down there, or do you make a dog park in the city, or do we put our snow there? You know, we're gonna have to find places to put our snow.
It's definitely an issue that's gonna be coming as early as this winter.
Right.
With snow in the downtown, and, but the concern even down there, because it's in such close proximity to residential with those type of operations usually going on in the middle of the night. So all those things will be considered.
And that's, you know, if that's what happens, great. I just was curious when I was looking at this tennis court repavement. That's what naturally came to mind, is that we've had those tennis courts down there basically been inactive and locked up, and they're in disrepair. And I think that used to be a park over there, right in the backside of Kunkel Field, and, but now it's kind of a staging area for public work, so maybe that's the plan, is to convert that back to maybe an open space park that's not, you know, in a kind of facility. But, no, I'm not looking for any council action, just thought I could request that maybe at the next Parks Commission, they bring that up and, you know, see what they think or say. So that's it.
Jim?
How many, how many tennis courts do we have in the city? Just those two, or is there more?
So we have two at Casey Lake and one at Housie, but the one at Housie is in disrepair, too. And they're looking at making that into a pickleball court. We're getting a lot of requests for pickleball, and the one at Silver Lake would also be lined for pickleball. It'd be the two tennis courts, plus you'd be able to add four pickleball courts to the courts at Casey, or at Silver Lake. So it's really offering something for seniors that we've had people showing up at, back when I was on the, on the commission, we had a lot, few people show up in regards to having pickleball.
Yeah. What's pickleball?
Tell you what, it's up and coming. It's big, and it's getting bigger. And I know Oakdale's getting bigger. They're putting in courts over there.
Alabama's crazy.
It's more of a southern, you know, it comes from Arizona, so it's all the retirees. But now it's trickling, it's trickling down to the younger crowd now, too.
And if I could, if the park commissioner is looking at that, one of the considerations that I've heard from other cities that have been putting it in is they've had a problem with noise complaints, just because of that, and they, with pickleball, because it's of the, just the clunking in the paddle.
Is it the sound of the pickle?
Whatever. But there's been noise complaints where they've actually had to put up a sound blankets around the court, just to try to deal with the sound, because it was in neighborhoods, and then they were getting complaints from the neighbors. So just FYI, as other problems around.
Wow.
Yes.
First to hear that.
Yes.
Okay. I think that's it. I have nothing else. We are gonna go into a closed session. So motion to close the regular meeting at eight thirty-one.
So moved.
Yep. So the meeting will be closed as permitted by the attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D dot oh five subdivision three B to consider opioid litigation support. So a motion to close a regular meeting at nine, eight thirty-one and go into a closed meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved, your honor.
Moved by councilmember Walzak. Moved by Councilmember Walzak.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Sonic. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next regular scheduled city council meeting is Tuesday, May 21st, 2019, at 6:30 PM.